Meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. Is, has anyone had a chance to look over the minutes from last meeting and are there any corrections needed? I thought they were fine. Okay. Should I approve?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mm-hmm. Okay, great. Moving on. The first item on the agenda is one that we always love hearing about. It is the Youth Services and Library Literacy, excuse me, Literacy Update. Hi, Dan.
I'm going to have Maureen go first. She's our new children's librarian and she'll give you a little update on Youth Services.
Hi. As like Dan said, my name's Maureen. I'm the new children's librarian here and it's going well so far. And we've had a pretty good update in that we got a grant from the Library Innovation Lab with the California Humanities. It's up to $5,000 to provide programs for the immigrant communities of our area. So we actually have one of our programs tonight at 5:00 to celebrate the Mid-Autumn Moon Festival. And we have, on the 29th, we'll have our Georgia Baker, a bilingual storyteller. Then we will have Danza Sinatli on the 15th of October. They are a local Aztec dance group. And then we have Tradición Mexicana USA on December 3rd. And they are also local. They do baile folclorico.
What's the name of the program series?
Oh, thank you. The name of the program series is Around the World in Many Ways.
Cute.
Yep.
Maureen implied and got the grant herself.
That's amazing.
Thank you. Hope there's anything else or?
Anything else you want to add about your services from your perspective?
I really feel like summer reading went very well. So that was, it was our first one back in a couple of years and so we had a pretty good turnout. And that's about it.
Okay. Hey, Maureen, I do have a couple of questions. So how did you determine or choose the programs that you have outlined for the rest of the year?
Part of it was what was available in the area and then part of it was what was available in the timeframe because the grant, you want your programs between August and December.
Okay.
So I couldn't do like Lunar New Year because that's in February.
Right.
And you have to spend it in those certain amount of time. So just looking at demographics data, what were people interested in? I know a lot of families were interested in like educational opportunities and cultural exposure. So there's a lot of like storytime components and presentations so people are exposed to new things or see their cultures reflected in the library.
That's awesome. Are we pairing this with like social media outreach at all or?
Yeah, we do have some social media outreach and then I submitted calendar events to California Humanities so they will be posting it on their blog as well.
Okay.
And then the San Diego Union Tribune published our press release. So that was awesome.
That's really cool. Okay, great. Any other questions for Maureen? Okay, go ahead.
Do you, I know that it was announced when you joined the team and I'm sure they give us a background then, but can you just tell us where you came from?
Oh, yeah. So I was born in Santa Barbara, so I'm from California. And then I got my degree for librarianship at University of Washington Seattle. So I was up there for school and then I moved back down here for work. So I'm pretty fresh out of grad school. So this is, I've been here for a year and it's been my first official librarian job.
Awesome. And so I'm just wondering, you know, Escondido has a large population of Hispanic or served or, and so I was just wondering how you plan to do the reach out and to learn more about that community?
Yeah. Part of it is through just my own research and then talking with staff has been super helpful. Like our literacy coordinator, Myrna, gave me a bunch of awesome details about what people were looking for. We have some Spanish-speaking staff members, so I've been trying to get stuff translated. And I'm just reaching out to the community at large.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
My turn?
Your turn.
So I will add that Maureen also ran a quick in-house survey to talk to a lot of our community that came in to the library to get an idea about those programs. So got a lot of that good feedback. So it was a tight turnaround on the crunch time to get that figured out, but she was very resourceful on pulling together that data. So, all right, so any other Youth Services updates? We have summer reading did very well. Like Maureen mentioned, it was our first in-person back in three years. So very much nice to see the community back. We have a lot of fun programs coming up in the near future. We are working with the San Diego River Park. They actually secured a grant through partnership with us to do outdoor equity access for the community. Up on October 22nd, I believe, we're going to be hosting a many environmental fair that has many of the organizations throughout Escondido and throughout San Diego County coming to demonstrate volunteer opportunities for teens and young adults in the community and also alternative job paths besides the common teacher, educator, doctor, lawyer, things like that that they get told in school. And it's also a program that's, we're going to be working with them for the next three years. They'll also be able to go out to these sites through vans that the organization's going to be renting to get them to the different outdoor experiences to just kind of explore. So I'll provide a lot more details on that soon, but we're very happy with that. And we just with Cal State San Marcos through another partnership, we'll be working with one of the professors over there. National Science Foundation grant was awarded. We'll be working with them for the next five years to provide after-school programming for kids that focus on STEM. They identify real-world problems and use various emerging technologies or technologies that have been around for a little while to learn about that. And the folks that come in to run those are actually college students learning to be educators and teachers. So they're getting hands-on experience with the local community and getting kids excited about also all other alternative career paths. So we're very, very excited about that, plus what Maureen has mentioned. Plus, we returned to our regular storytimes this week for Baby Lap Sit and our Toddler Tales. Baby Lap Sit, we saw 53 new families. And Toddler Tales today, first one back since we ended in early August, 125. 125 people. So storytimes are back too. They're back, yay! So our community is very excited about that. So we look forward to what else we're doing. Literacy updates for you. We are rolling into doing hybrid classes again, starting in a couple of weeks. Some of those will be in-person and some of those will be on Zoom. We found during the pandemic that many of our literacy learners benefited from having Zoom hybrid classes since it fit in better with their work schedules or their kids being at school. They can just log in and take care of that. Several of our learners are also looking forward to getting back to the in-person classes as well. We did secure an English as a Second Language grant from the California Library Literacy Services, which has allowed us to relaunch that program. We're in the process right now of recruiting students for our classes. We are able to hire an ESL specialist who will be doing assessments and running classes at the library, we're hoping Tuesdays and Thursdays, starting in the next few weeks. We wanted to get started sooner, but we can't control the outside of like, come on, we have all this great stuff. So we've managed to get a lot of word out to a lot of the local organizations, a lot of school districts. We just got five phone calls alone today from very interested parents in our ESL program. So we're looking forward to seeing where that goes. And yeah, and literacy in general has been very well. A lot of what we do is through word of mouth, so just rebuilding that, even though the pandemic is over, a lot has been affected by that. So we are building strong and the literacy learners we have are happy to be back. So any questions on the answer about anything I spoke to?
Yeah. Dan, do you have enough personnel to handle any growth or new programs that you have?
Yeah, for literacy or for Youth Services?
Everything.
Yes. So for literacy, with the grants, we're actually in the process of hiring more staff in order to assist us with the classes and what we're running. And we also are now working with Merrick or through the California Literacy Library Program to bring on a full-time and a half-time volunteers, for the most part, but to get living, I think it's living allowances, to work with us so they'll help us do assessments and run classes and things like that as well. So through various grant work, we've been able to put work to hire staff, so in the process.
Okay. Are you reasonably comfortable that you can sustain that staff, assuming the programs are well-received and after, like renew the grants or?
Yes. The grants, once we get them from the state, they continue to be funded for at least five to 10 years, if not more. Literacy grant that we've been operating, we've been getting for over 30 years at this point. So if it's a successful program, the state will continue to provide those funds. So in a long, short, or round way, yes, I think right where we're at, getting those staff on board, we can maintain.
Okay. Got to love California.
Yes, they're doing good for us.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I ask this question a lot, Dan, and so I'm sorry, it's the first time you're going to hear it, but everyone else has heard it probably for the last several meetings. So it sounds like we have a lot of great programs for the youth. What is your idea or communication plan around getting to the youth as far as like, are we talking to them in their language, in their avenue?
So yeah, some of what we have done, a lot of, sorry, like youth, tweens, teens, all of it. So kind of where a lot of our, I'll use this phrase, bread and butter comes from is local outreach to the schools, going to the communities where they may gather, be it lunch and learn, after-school programs. We have, whatever they're called, family read nights, things like that. So we actually go out to the schools. This is the first year we've been able to actually go back and do that. I have several Spanish-speaking staff that takes the time to translate our communications out to, are you familiar with Peachjar? Yeah, so we utilize Peachjar. I have a contact over with the school district. The two assistants to the superintendent, one takes care of Peachjar and one takes care of family communication for us that we've started to utilize. And that's actually where we got a lot of our ESL parents today was from that connection. So we're utilizing those and I'm always looking for other ways we can communicate and partner with our local community. Some of the other ways we've done that is through our local partners that have helped to support our summer reading program. Always whenever we send out sponsorship letters, we communicate what we're doing and we would like to draw up materials. So we try a wide variety of things and some of our best is just talking to them, say, hey, we have all this cool stuff. Sometimes it's getting to the parents, sometimes it's getting to the teens.
Sounds good. And how long have you been with the library?
So I have been with the library since 2016.
I love your leadership enthusiasm and just mentorship I can tell is going really well, so thank you.
I appreciate you saying that. Thank you so much.
Great.
All good? All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. It looks like, I think, Agenda Item Number Three, we are going to have to postpone until next month as a result of the Friends meeting next week. So John has graciously accepted to attend, yes, because I had a work commitment come up last, very last minute. So thank you, John. And we'll talk through that next month. Okay.
Yes, and I would appreciate your help, Dara, at that meeting.
Why don't we jump to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the Strategic Plan Review and Tracking?
I felt like I was kind of reinventing the wheel on this one. It looks a heck of a lot like the old one, but.
Okay.
I'm going to pull, well, Katie is going to pull up our strategic plan and show you it very easily corresponds with, it's the next page, it's not the key. Yeah, so it corresponds very nicely with our strategic plan goals and objectives. And it's already broken into four parts. So I was leaning toward going through where we go through Community Hub slash Cultural Connector. And that's our, you know, first strategic plan goal, as far as numerically anyway, since there's four. And doing that one in January, May, September. And then we would do Embrace Emerging Services, February, June, October. And then continue on to Support Escondido Economy, which would be March, July, November. And then Resilience being April, August, December. My rationale for that was just, it changes every month, so it gives us a little time. If we're reviewing the same section, month after month after month, I think it's going to be a little stale. Whereas if we spread it out and we just revisit each one quarterly, there's going to be activity, we're going to have more updates, especially when you look at so many of them. For instance, educate residents about modern library services, that's going to be ongoing and ongoing and ongoing. But if we visit it quarterly, we can itemize, this is what we did in this quarter of time. And I think it'll make it, fingers crossed, a little more interesting to go through than when we gave you previously in the last strategic plan, everything at one time. And I think it became a little monotonous and it wasn't necessarily reviewed that much. We tried highlighting and things like that. So that was my idea, as far as an idea starter. Now I'd like feedback and if you have any ideas of what you would like to see, what's missing, we can go from there.
Have you thought about, you mentioned itemizing, you know, listing what was accomplished. Does it make sense to also lay out some goals that you're going to try to achieve before the next review for that particular subject comes up?
Yeah, we could definitely talk, talk about that. And I like the idea of it being a little more focused and within a scope rather than all of them combined together. I think, yeah, I think so. That would be something where I can tell you, okay, this happened in the last quarter. These were the highlights and some things that we're planning for, but then you can definitely contribute and say, you know, that's all great, but here's what we're hearing from the community and we'd like to add these things to your list. That would, I think that that would flow nicely by breaking it up that way.
Okay, so.
So you could contribute to the goals for the next quarter.
But then the next quarter, we'd visit to see how, what actions were taken to accomplish the goal. Like you said, what, some, a lot of this stuff is just ongoing, but there's specific things that are done to, to accomplish the ongoing.
Exactly. And I feel like breaking the time span down allows us to focus a little bit and have those examples, whereas if you think about the year as a whole, you're just like, it's a little overwhelming and it's hard to flush out some specific examples.
Okay. Well, I like the idea of saying, let's say for a particular item, that this is where we are now and this is the specific things we're going to do over the next three months. And we'll talk about our accomplishments or lack thereof when we get there at the next meeting, next time, next review of that particular subject.
Yeah, I like it. I think it makes it just clearer and more focused.
Yeah. Yeah, and instead, like, yes.
So from a process perspective, right, I guess I'm trying to figure out how this is going to go down. So we're in September right now. So in this meeting, we would be discussing what was accomplished in the last quarter and then also what we would like to see for next month.
Right. So September, we would look at Community Hub, Cultural Connector, and then look at leveraging partnerships for visibility. And right now, I can tell you, we've been in talks with, you know, the Zoo and the Safari Center about really cross-promoting our passes, which will happen in December. Well, we, it can happen before then, but they're wanting to use the electronics so they don't have to provide actual tickets. So we're working with them. We still work closely with the Children's Museum, San Diego. What's up? Oh, what were you going to, go ahead, sorry.
So one of the things for this specific goal and objective, Community Hub Cultural Connector, Embrace Diverse Cultures is one of the strategies that's listed. And that's beautifully tied into what Maureen just discussed. We have a four-part, grant-funded set of programs designed to engage individuals in different cultural events, three of which are related to the Latinx community. So we have one on South America, we have a folclorico, and we also have traditional Aztec dancers. And in addition to the performances, there will be a brief lecture about the culture and the importance. And then additionally, there'll be snacks, always fun. So that's one way in which I could say, okay, that's some way we are looking to hit that strategy. And then because this is happening over the next few months, the last program will be in December, then by the time this rolls around again, we'll be able to report back on how that went and how we're looking at that for the future.
Okay. I really like that approach. I guess my next question is, how do you intend to track all of this?
A lot of it will just be reported back in programming that we have or services we've added. Because another thing in November, in honor of Native American Month, we'll be having a presenter for all ages, not children or not younger youth-focused. So yeah, I think the way we would track it is in the status, similar to what we did before. We wouldn't necess, we can create the column of like who led the program, but I think we can just go over that in the status, that it was part of adult services or youth services and the names of the programs and give you some background on those. Because by focusing on a smaller piece at a time, we can flush out a lot more of the details when we're, you know, whenever that item is on the agenda.
Okay. I see that the number two is quite long.
It is, but what I was thinking with that is, it's, it's long, but it's, it's not an overwhelming amount. I don't know that we need to break it down because there's going to be pieces where I think some of the topics, like for instance, encouraging reading, these are going to be, there's a lot of redundancy.
Okay.
In these lists, especially the longer one.
Okay.
And also, a lot of those are kind of our ongoing bread and butter programs. So like, for example, support early literacy and education. I mean, that's going to tie into what Dan and Myrna and their team are working on pretty much every day.
Right.
And we can just kind of report on some of the highlights when that's coming up or if there's something special they're doing.
Okay. Okay, great. I think that's a great way forward.
So do they need to vote to approve or anything or is, no?
Okay. Okay.
Just have a detailed question on page 11, third item from the top. No, second item, sorry. Can I take a look at that analytical data you're getting from Library IQ? Just, just out of general curiosity, I wanted to see what it is.
Yes.
It's just my quant nature. I'm not, not, I think it's a great idea. I just wanted to see what it is.
Yes. And, or is that something you're going to get screenshots?
Yeah, or send me a URL, whatever works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, anything else? Okay, great. Thanks, Dara. And Katie?
Sure.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Five. I guess we're going to discuss the fact that the mayor and city council would like a report presented to them either on the 12th, 26th, or November 16th.
Yes, so they have requested and they have requested that you come and speak and give an update on what's going on with the Library Board of Trustees. Those are the next three available dates, so those are why they're there on the list. If those aren't doable, we can look further out on the calendar and just pick one and get back to their office.
I think the 16th of November will work great.
Okay.
And then, Dara, will you and I work that together or is that something? Okay, great, wonderful. What I'd really like to highlight is all of the grants that we just discussed. So if we could get a list of all of the grants we're currently operating under, what their value is, and then how many, this might be more difficult, but how many people attend the events that are funded through it? Because I think that shows value to the community, right? That, you know, we go out and our professionals go out and get these grants. It also shows, you know, what burden we're taking off of the community from a funding perspective. And then the popularity is also something to show to the council because they'll know that our events are popular.
Yes.
And that the library is great. Okay.
Sounds great.
So that's one thing I'd like to talk through. And then for those on the board, if you'd like to come up with ideas of other topics you'd like to discuss, I know, Dara, you probably have a slew of issues or things, but I would like to hear from the other board members about, you know, what you'd like to highlight or bring, bring up to the council. New library, well, of course, we'll have something on the new library, absolutely.
I have a question on, one of the things that they're asking for, share any major issues. Is there, do you have an idea of what that would be from your guys' point of view?
I don't know. I think it was a general email sent to all of the boards. So I think it's whatever the trustees determine is a major issue facing, you know, the board or.
For us, it would be, I was just wondering if you guys had any ideas that you would like us to talk about as far as major issues?
You know, I don't, I don't think we have any major issues other than really needing a better facility. So that infrastructure grant is crucial to us, but can you think of anything outstanding that's like a major issue? Just building maintenance. Yeah, it really comes back to building maintenance seems to be our biggest battle.
Dara, why don't we also set aside some time, maybe in the beginning of October, hopefully prior to our next meeting, so you and I can talk through kind of like an outline of what this looks like and then we can bring it back to the board?
That sounds great.
Okay. Great. Would anyone like to move, are we approving it? Are we? Okay. Would anyone like to move to approve the November 16th presentation to the city council?
Second? Sure.
Okay. Okay. So I think Merrick, you, okay.
Uh, mayor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, but we're giving any recommendations to you?
Yes. So what'll happen is, beginning of October, Dara and I will meet, or late September, whichever works best for you, Dara, we'll meet, we'll go through an outline of what we'd like to present. We'll bring it to the board, we'll vote on it, and then Dara and I will get the presentation together. And then November, we could do a run-through at the board meeting if we wanted to. Yeah.
Just curious, we have elections coming up for city council.
Oh.
In, right? November. So we'll, on November 16th, will we, we will be dealing with a lame duck council or the new one?
I believe they, um, December is what we have.
Okay.
It would be like that.
Okay. Something to think about.
So what were the dates that they presented to us?
It sounds like we can pick. So we chose the 16th, which is the week after the election.
Yeah.
If we choose to postpone until we have the new council here, I would say January, sometime in January would probably be best because December's probably going to be very, that's a great point, John.
I feel very uninformed on this one.
Okay.
I'm kind of just sharing almost.
Okay.
The quote from an email with you. So I don't know if we can go back and say, hey.
Oh, we're, we've got so much to put together for him, it's going to take us till January. Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we go with the 16th for now and we'll do our same planning. And then, once we get in contact with Zach, he can let us know if there's any dates available in January. And, you know, I think it's extremely important that the new council members hear from us specifically regarding a new library. It's going to be, so I think it would be very important if we did delay, but of course I don't want us to get in trouble if they, if everything's going to wrap up by the 16th of November, I don't want to be the outlier.
Okay.
Okay.
Works for me.
Okay, great. And I can shoot an email to Zach and Joanna about this too.
Okay.
Okay. Good thinking, John. Okay. Anything else? No? Okay, great. All right, I think we are on to the director's report.
Sorry, back to me again? No, I was just reminded that we should know about the infrastructure grant before the November 16th meeting, fingers crossed.
Do you know how far in advance of that?
Well, we were supposed to know late summer, so I'm thinking now mid- Well, we were supposed to know late summer, so I'm thinking now mid to late fall. So my fingers are crossed that we will know by November. Have you, I haven't seen any updates on a release date, do you?
I've heard from the state librarian, who's currently on vacation, which may be why things are delayed at the moment. But I've heard that we should hear about the infrastructure grant by the end of this month.
Oh, okay.
They've actually posted a job recruitment for the project manager for the infrastructure grant, which is very encouraging.
That is encouraging.
And from the sense that they will need someone to manage things that are going to start happening.
Have you heard any whispers about Escondido specifically?
I have not heard any specific whispers, although I do have a contact at the state library who has promised to give me a heads-up in advance of the official notice. So, as soon as I know, you will know.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. All right, over to you, Dara, for the.
Okay. So, in July, July was our last month of summer reading program. And adults, the adult services department hosted a total of 12 programs with 249 participants. Most popular being the Succulent Swap, which had 96 attendees. And the second Saturday concert was 61 people in attendance. We also have 56 teens participate in seven programs, which included Gamology, Anime Your Way, the, I'm going to mispronounce this, Miyazaki Marathon. It was a three-part series, and Sanrio Pom Poms, Teen Book Swap, and Summer Camp Out. And our youth services hosted 15 programs with 587 attendees. They also did reach out at an event with 44 people. And program highlights for July in the children's programming included the Traveling Tide Pools, which had 210 people attend, Dry Clay Craft, which had 106 in attendance, Upcycling Craft, which had 66, Wild Wonders had 157, and Mark Griffith had 92. In August, youth services took a little rest by not hosting special programs after a very busy summer reading challenge. They did maintain their regular storytimes and have been busy visiting schools and reminding students about library services as they get ready to take on homework, science projects, and reports. Yes, absolutely.
Just, so you guys know, September is library card signup month, and we are celebrating that by doing a social media campaign. We also have a bulletin board upstairs in the youth services department that says, it's library card signup month, write your favorite book that you're going to check out with your card. So, we're doing that, and then also, I can't remember the exact dates, but I believe it's September 18th, that week is banned books week. And we do have our banned books display on the cake display for the month of September. It's in the main lobby. And we will be doing several different social media posts about banned books week as well.
On the topic of library card signups, I was in the library, I don't know, three weeks ago, maybe, and a woman came in and she was applying for a library card, and she didn't have an address. Can you explain how that works? Because for her, it was a little confusing, did she need to put down an address, like? Could you explain that a little bit?
Okay, so we have several different library card types. So, in order to check out a physical item, so DVD, book, et cetera, you must have your photo ID, a valid government-issued photo ID when you sign up for a card. Or, if you have a different kind of card, you can always upgrade to that type of card. If you have a photo ID, and we can just do that. That's just because it helps us, if someone loses an item, we're able to then really, like, get, get them to return it. So that's the reason that we require a photo ID and address for physical item checkout. Patrons who do not have an address or a photo ID can get a digital services card online, and that, they can check out all of our e-materials with that. Also, they can get an internet-only card, which allows them to use the computers in the library, as well as digital item checkout, if they do not have an address or valid photo ID. So that's, does that answer the question?
Absolutely does, yes, I'm really glad that we offer those things. How forthcoming is the staff with those options? Are they, are they, obviously, they should be aware of those.
Yeah, our customer service department, who manages library cards, they should all be aware of those different types. They are all different, you know, in our system, like, there's all different, you know, when you select. And they all have different parameters, like, coded into the system. So like, if, for example, someone has an internet-only card, and they go to try and check an item out, the system will give them an error message on pop-up, and then staff know to take a look at that when they come to the desk to ask why. But they should be informed when they get their card, that it's, what type of card it is.
Okay, and so, do we have like a protocol, if, if an individual comes and says, oh, I don't have an address? Is, is there a protocol where the staff is supposed to, you know, let them know, oh, well, instead of, you know, being able to check out?
Yes.
Okay.
They should be.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm very glad we have that in place.
And I wanted to mention something I forgot. Tomorrow, the library will be closed. It is our annual all-staff day, so we will be enjoying good food, but also learning about libraries in general, and going over some things. We have a lot of new staff, a couple working on MLS, to talk about library professionalism in the building, but also, just some networking exercises, and making sure that customer service understands what literacy does, and that youth services understands what adult services does, and that we have a better understanding, so we're cross-marketing one another.
Wonderful, any other questions from the group? No? Okay, let's go down the line then, and share an experience, or a pass, or whatever you'd like to do. We'll start with you, Virginia.
I was just curious, I saw, especially with the heat wave, that I felt like the library was kind of portrayed in a negative view for being closed on Sunday during the heat wave. And somebody was like, had posted on social media, like, how do you feel about the library being closed on the hottest day of the week? And so it was just, I didn't like that, because it was like, they're open every other day, like, they deserve a day off, too. So I was just wondering if you guys received any backlash, or comments, or anything about that?
I haven't received any comments or comment cards. I knew the, I knew that we had somebody from KPBS out, so I knew that that was coming. But the same was also true of the community center and all of the other locations the city chose. So, yeah. It was a bummer, because I do feel like the new schedule has worked very well for us. And then, of course, this one week where the heat zone was, or the cool zones were definitely needed for the heat, I can see where that would have made a difference, and, yeah. Yeah, bummer on the media. I don't have a good answer, and we'd have to coordinate with the city to talk about what would have to fall in place, not only with the city, but also staffing, and whether or not LSNS would be involved in that. So there's, there's a lot to get together to be open for that one day.
Yeah, I agree, like, I don't have any problem with the schedule. I was just kind of bummed that they just take any opportunity to like, shed a negative light on like, one day. I mean, of course, people need the cool zones and all that, and I hope they found other options, but.
Yeah.
I was just like, why can't you promote a lot of all the other positive things going on there?
Yeah, I have a positive anecdote to that. I had a gentleman call the other day and asked if we were open and what hours, because he, it was hot at his house, and I said, oh, well, it's Thursday, we're open until 8 o'clock. He's like, you're open until 8 o'clock? Wow, that's amazing, I'm going to just come right over. And it was like 2, and he called me, I was like, yeah, man. And I told him our hours, and he was super excited, so, just one person, but still.
Have you guys seen an increase in people attending over the past week?
At the door count, honestly.
Yeah, I don't know, I will take a look at the door count and see, because that would be very interesting. I would imagine so, it seems anecdotally busier when I walk around downstairs. The fact that our toddler tales program today had 100, what did he say, 150? And in summer, when we usually have our highest numbers, it was like, the highest number we had was 95. So, I think that also speaks to probably the heat as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great, I'll go next. Last week, I was able to meet with the CEO and advancement director of the San Diego Children's Discovery Museum that's here in Escondido. They are interested in partnering with the library, but in addition, they are looking for more space for their museum. So, we discussed a lot about the new library and the new facility in general, and what our vision was that we established last year, about having, you know, more community involvement, community group, facility space. And it's something that they were very interested in. So, I reached out to Dara, and we're going to try to give them a tour of the library next week. They were very surprised that we had a 58,000-square-foot building. I was like, well, it's a library, so, I mean, yeah. I think it's 58, right?
46.
Oh.
Actually, it's 42, the main building, and then when you add the Pioneer Room and Literacy Center, then it hits 46.
It's 46. On the lib, on the website, it says 58.
We have different numbers in like, four.
Where did 58 come from, though? Because I knew 42 and 46 were conflicting.
So, this is what I'm going to do, I'm taking what Dara says as the right amount, because I've got, I've got the number on the website, which was there before I started. Then I've got the number that gets reported in the state report. Then I have the number that Dara has. So we will get that all to be accurate, and I will update each accordingly. So, thank you.
Regardless, they thought it was a large space, so.
Well, considered, the rule of thumb, if that still exists, for size of libraries versus size of cities, is what, a half a square foot per person? Which makes our library less than half the size it should be.
Right.
To support a city of 150,000.
Right. Yeah, so it was a really enlightening conversation with them. They were very, very interested in our strategic plan, and actually quite impressed with LSNS and our process and everything. So I thought that was really great. But yeah, I'm looking forward to continuing conversations, and then also to reaching out to other community groups.
Are they a nonprofit or for-profit?
They're a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), yes, yeah. And they have, they have quite an extensive board. I'd, if you, I'd recommend you look up their, it's really cool, actually. Yeah, very interesting, their CEO is, and the advancement director is, they're really sharp people, very cool.
Could I have Heidi speak for a second?
Of course.
The handy thing about having someone from HQ, they always check Library IQ, so she has more information.
Oh, good, oh, good.
Let's see. That one's automatically on. Oh, okay, so everybody can hear me? So, on the foot traffic question during this past week. So one of the tools within our Library IQ dashboard is something to complement the door counters that we have in the library. We also have a foot traffic analysis that is, you know, when you do an internet search, and it shows you that little graph of, is this, is the grocery store busy right now? So we have that for our libraries as well. And it's based on cellphone data. So, that means that, you know, it's not necessarily counting for little ones or who don't have a cellphone, or anyone else who might not have a cellphone. It's something that we use in concert with our door count data. But our typical hourly foot traffic, based on these metrics, would be around 70 to 75 people an hour. This past week, during the heat wave, it's been close to 100 people an hour.
Look at that, that is great, I love that, that is amazing.
I agree, and I just learned that it's there.
So, there's a whole new thing in Library IQ? Okay, good, it's new within the last couple of months, and not just clueless, okay.
Something you may not have heard, Mira Boreas, who was on our strategic, Baby Boy last week.
No, good for her!
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh!
Yeah.
Oh, you know her, oh, my gosh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, I didn't even know she was pregnant.
This meeting's been full of surprises.
Yeah, it is. As soon as I get some spare time, which I hope will happen in November. Yeah, well, I'm hopeful. I'm going to try to figure out a way to get the information on what's available at the library, services, facilities, books, ebooks, whatever. There's just too many people in this community who are involved in mentoring, and helping, and offering services to the underserved that don't know enough about what goes on here. And I'm, see if I can figure out some easy way to make this happen.
To comment and compliment you, the staff and the library for all the work you did throughout the summer, with all the summer programs, hearing about it, and the increased public participation in it. So just, I want to say congratulations, and thank you for doing a great job.
Okay, great, well, thank you. If there's nothing else, I will go ahead and adjourn the, this meeting. We're adjourned.